Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council for Tuesday, July the 8th, 2025. This meeting is now called to order. Please stand for the invocation given by Councilman Tanner and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we gather this evening entrusted with decisions that shape the lives of the people we serve. In a time of division, when many voices are raised and sometimes don't feel heard, remind us that our highest calling is not to win arguments, but to build community. As we consider matters that affect our roads, our ordinances, and the future of our neighborhoods, let us not act out of ambition or individual gain. Instead, give us the wisdom to value one another above ourselves, to listen more than we speak, and to seek understanding more than victory. In moments of disagreement, may we find common purpose; in moments of uncertainty, may we act with thoughtfulness and care, guide us away from cynicism and toward courage, the courage to serve with integrity, to compromise when needed, and to uphold the dignity of every person in this county. Remind us that true leadership is not found in power but in service, that unity does not mean uniformity but shared purpose, and that our neighbors deserve decisions made not in haste or anger but with humility, justice, and care. May wisdom guide our deliberations and may our decisions reflect both courage and compassion. In your name we pray, amen.
I see some scouts toward the back with the scouts. Come on forward, and we'd like to see if you guys would help us lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, since you guys are here, and you're probably going to need some merit badge points, so would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Guys, what troop are you from?
Five seventy-two.
Five seventy-two? Five seventy-two? Thank you, fellas, Troop 572. Okay. Please note that Councilwoman Shabazz is attending our meeting remotely. Ms. Shabazz, good evening, can you hear us? We can't hear you.
She's muted.
Ms. Shabazz, I believe you're muted. She's working on it, I think that's what that means.
Or Jennifer is, does she have permissions to unmute herself?
Ms. Shabazz, can you hear us now?
Yes, now I can, can you hear me?
Awesome, there you are, thank you.
Thank you, I had to have permission to be unmuted, thank you very much.
Next, our petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 10th, 2025, public hearing? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. The motion passes, the minutes of the June 10th, 2025, public hearing have been approved. Are there any other petitions, communications, or miscellaneous matters? Seeing none, we move on to board appointments. May I have a nomination for appointment to the St. Joseph County Animal Control Commission?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Dr. Kathy Harris to renew her appointment to the Animal Control Commission.
Thank you, Councilman Tanner, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, do I have a second? All right, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same motion. The motion passes nine to zero. Dr. Kathy Harris is reappointed to the St. Joseph Animal Control Commission. May I have a motion only, motion, to the St. Joseph County Economic Development Commission?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Mr. Terry Bush as our appointment to the Economic Development Commission.
Thank you, Councilman Tanner, are there any other nominations at this time? All right, hearing none, do I have a second on the nomination of, nomination only of Mr. Terry Bush? All right, seconded by Councilman Thomas, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion passes nine to zero. Terry Bush is nominated to the St. Joseph County Economic Development Commission, this is a nomination only. May I have a nomination for appointment to the St. Joseph County Emergency Management Advisory Board?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Counselor Diana Hess to the St. Joseph County EMA Board.
Thank you, Councilman Katanzerite, is there a, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you. Councilmen, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. The motion passes nine to zero. Councilwoman Hess is appointed to the St. Joseph County Emergency Management Advisory Board. Do we have a report from the county auditor?
No report, Mr. President.
A report from the county commissioners? Although we have all three commissioners here, which is excellent to see. Any report from any council special committees? I don't believe we have any special committees at this time. Next, our first readings. Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 59-25?
An ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council appropriating the funds necessary to pay the salary and expenses of an attendance officer under IC 20-33-2-31, petitioner Brian Tanner.
Bill Number 59-25 is assigned to the Budget and Administration Committee. That concludes first readings for this evening. Next, our resolution, resolutions. Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 57-25?
A resolution to honor Clay basketball hero Jaron Cornell.
Councilwoman Drake.
A resolution to honor Clay basketball hero Jaron Cornell. Whereas Jaron Cornell is one of the most legendary basketball players to ever grace the local courts of Clay High School, and whereas Jaron Cornell's last second three-pointer in the 1994 state championships tied the game and led to an overtime win for the Clay High Colonials that is still remembered as one of Clay's most triumphant moments in basketball history, and whereas Jaron Cornell's superior overall basketball skills and shooting abilities stunned Indiana, made him a Hoosier hero, and eventually led him to Purdue University where he still holds the record for the most three-point field goals made in a career, and whereas Jaron Cornell was a beloved member of Clay Coach Tom DeBate's team, remembered for his hard work and discipline, and called Jay Cool by his teammates and friends because of his relaxed and humble nature, and whereas Jaron Cornell was a God-fearing man who loved the Lord, a father to Sierra and Jace, and a man who made his top priorities in life God, family, and community in that order, and whereas Jaron Cornell spent much of his life giving back to his community, using his basketball and mentorship skills to inspire and guide local children through his work with such programs as the Heroes Camp and the Boys and Girls Clubs, and whereas it is fitting that we recognize individuals like Jaron Cornell, a role model for our youth, whose achievements and character bring honor to our community and inspire future generations. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Joseph County Council commends Mr. Jaron Cornell for his many accomplishments and for his contributions to Clay High School, Clay Township, St. Joseph County, and the great state of Indiana.
Thank you, Councilwoman Drake.
Sierra, do you want to come up?
Would any other council members like to make comments at this time? All right, well, I can just remember as a young basketball fan watching that Clay team and, at a time when South Bend teams didn't win state championships, and that was a fun team to watch, really a fun team to watch, so I didn't know the gentleman personally, but he was certainly one amazing basketball player. All right, hearing no other comments, oh, yes, hearing no other comments from the council, I will allow the commissioners.
I'd love listening to you.
Commissioners, would you like to make comments?
Good evening. First of all, thank you for honoring my dear friend and I'm proud to say, very close friends with his dad for over thirty years, Paul Cornell, or as we all call him, PC, and it's been my honor and privilege to not only be very close friends with his dad, but to get to know Jaron over the years, and as everyone knows, everyone called him Jay Cool because of his demeanor on and off the court, but nobody but me knows this, I always refer to him as Jay Nice because his game was so nice, but more importantly, he was one, him and his dad are two of the nicest people that I've ever met in my life, and I'll say it again, this is extra special for me because of my relationship with both of them, like I said, with his dad for over thirty years and Jaron for a very long time, so this is a great honor and thank you. And with that, we, I'm going to speak for the commissioners, and if they want to add, that's fine, but we are going to present Jaron with the key to the county.
Started to say something just privately, but like Dan, I didn't know Jaron real well.
that a lot of people don't realize unless you're a true fan like both of us are, is when they won that state championship, that was before the high schools were separated into different classes, and I'll never forget the headline in the Tribune that said, "South Bend Central Finally Has A Partner." And I thought that was great, and I guess the last thing I'll say, I'll never forget,
Our boys went to Clay High School, and hearing the phrase "role model," I just remember
PC, I don't think you know this one, had a conversation with Jaron one time when we
our boys going out on the court, he was always gracious and talked to the kids and encouraged
were together, and since both of us are left-handed, I had to ask him, you know, did you get that
them, and truly, role model is so deserved for Jaron and all the memories that he gave
jumper from me? And he looked at me like I was nuts, so that was, that was my answer, but all kidding
us, and it's our behalf of the commissioners, our pleasure to recognize him and remember
aside, he was the best, so thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner Morton.
him, with the key to the county.
And thank you Commissioners Vaxmeyer and Hazen. I will go ahead and open the floor up to public hearing on Bill Number 57-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Anyone who'd like to speak in favor? All right, is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? All right, very good. Then we'll move on to Bill Number 58-25. Oh, we still have to vote, I'm sorry, that's right, we do still have to vote on that. All right, I need a motion to pass, Bill Number 57-25. So moved?
So moved.
So moved, and seconded, all right, we have a motion to pass and a second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Rutten?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabazz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Chetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 57-25 passed by a vote of nine to zero. We move on to Bill Number 58-25.
A resolution of the St. Joseph County Council recognizing and congratulating Mark Peterson on his retirement from WNDU-TV after forty years on the air.
Thank you, Clerk, Councilwoman Hess, and Councilman Katanzerite.
I'll just start by saying, it took me a minute to even find Mark in the sea of people here, but he is here with us this evening. Congratulations on your retirement, Mark, and I'll let Mark start off reading our resolution. I guess I'm starting, never mind. Whereas, from time to time, the St. Joseph County Council recognizes certain members of our community who have distinguished themselves by making a significant impact in our county, and by doing so, these individuals stand tall in their many contributions to our citizens. One such person who we are recognizing this evening is Mark Peterson, who has dedicated the past forty years providing our citizens with exemplary news reporting. He began researching stories for WNDU-TV on June 24th, 1985. He wasn't interested in being an anchor or a news editor. In a recent interview, he said, "My role was to get the lead story and get it before anyone else," and he was good at it.
Moving on, whereas Mark Peterson hailed from Chicago but grew up in Michigan, where the Peterson family became avid viewers of WNDU-TV because it was the hometown station. Following Mark's graduation from Dewaljack High School, he studied two years at Southwestern Michigan College before earning his Communication Arts degree at IU South Bend. Before joining WNDU, Mark worked in radio news at WRBR, WXMG, and WZZP, all representing the call letters and format changes to 103.9 FM on the FM dial. While at WZZP, he did serve as a news director before joining WNDU as a reporter, racking up numerous stories over his forty-year career.
Whereas Mark Peterson came to WNDU armed with a manual typewriter and sporting a mustache, much has changed since then. He was dedicated not just to getting the big story, but getting it right. When assigned to cover the Indiana State House, he literally had to file his story by putting it on a plane to the South Bend Airport to meet deadline, certainly way before the internet was helping us out. In addition to covering countless legislative hearings, he also reported on numerous trials, elections, school board meetings, council meetings, and conducted thousands of interviews. Mark has a talent for making complex stories understandable to keep his viewers well informed. As he shared, property taxes, there's probably not a drier subject on earth. I just took the time to understand, asked the right questions to the right people. Sorry, John.
Whereas Mark Peterson is a reliable fixture in our local news, who is valued by viewers and his extended family at WNDU, here are just a few of the accolades that were shared by his colleagues. Trish Sloma said about Mark, "Mark, you set the standard for excellence in reporting. I never thought you got enough of the awards or accolades that you should have." Former anchor Terry McFadden said that Mark knows the best people to talk to, and he has a keen understanding of the story. He has the trust of sources and the public. I never remember anyone calling to complain about a story he did. Mike Collins, also a former anchor and news director at WNDU, said, "Mark has been the glue that kept the newsroom together. He went out and did a story, no one babysat him. The next generation has a lot to learn from people like him. He is a good man, smart, and gets along with everyone." Lou Pierce, a former director of marketing and programming at WNDU, commented that, "Lizzie Mark is a tough one. He is a professional, he works so hard at being unbiased, he never shied away from his story. He is a classic journalist, a good person. He stands up for what is right, someone we all need." They all shared their sentiments with longtime South Bend Tribune staff writer Kathy Borlik for inclusion in her South Bend Tribune column to Mark.
Whereas Mark Peterson proved himself as a consummate news reporter by embodying the standards of journalistic integrity. In the WNDU farewell to Mark, he stated, "It's not about me, that means you're not doing your, that means you're doing your job. You're not the distraction, you're just the filter. Try to present both sides, try to be first with something," and that's what he did, as he served our local community admirably and humbly for forty years.
And whereas those of us who have stood face to face with Mark, answering his thoughtful and challenging questions admire and respect his contributions to stellar journalism in our community. We will miss his phone calls and text messages seeking details for a story, along with his respectful, relaxed, and often jocular approach to interviewing. I really appreciated all those front-guard interviews you did at my house, Mark, you made it real easy for me.
Now therefore, I mean, we could go on and on, but we need to finish this, so now therefore be it resolved by the St. Joseph County Council that members of the St. Joseph County Council wish to extend its sincere appreciation for Mark Peterson's adherence to ethical principles and professional standards in journalism, and congratulate him on his retirement on June 18th, 2025, forty years to the day from when he began his journey. We wish him many happy days with his wife Sue and his son Matt, and more time at his lake house, playing music with his friends in the band, and fitting in a golf game here and there. He's definitely earned it. Thank you, Mark.
It's nice to have a newsman on the spot. Congratulations.
For the record, I couldn't hit a three-pointer to save my life.
If you'd like to say anything, feel free.
No, I would just say, the professionalism of the county elected officials and staff really made my job a lot easier over the years, whether it was interviewing John Schallil, the airport director in the beginning, and Bill Schallil's, the economic development director in the present, so thanks again.
All right, are there any other council members who would like to comment on Bill 58-25? All right, seeing none, I will open public comment on Bill 58-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this resolution? Please be sure that you sign your name and address when you speak. Mr. Crusoe faked me out there, I thought he was going to get up, he is not. All right, is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this resolution? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Bill Number 58-25. Oh, I'm sorry, commissioners, please.
For the record, we did, the commissioners did present Mr. Peterson with the key to the county at WNDU a couple weeks ago. That was a little tough for me to walk into WNDU for obvious reasons, but it was mentioned, Mark, that you'll be spending time with the band, and I'm sure no one in this room knows that, I won't say we're bandmates, but I've had the privilege of performing with your illustrious band, and when we presented you with the key to the county, you did say that invitation is open, so I'm going to take you up on that. But just want to say, job well done, for the forty years you were there, and you interviewed me a lot of times, and always a stellar and very professional job, job well done, thank you.
Mr. President, I just want to say, I remember twenty-five years ago, or forty years ago, when we, I first met Mark, I was a patrolman on midnight shift, that's how long it was, and through that time, over the last forty-five years, I've met a lot of reporters, but none stick out more than him. I remember the first night I met him, he was this young polite kid that came out, wanted to get the best story that he could, like I said, it was on midnights and it was cold and rainy, but he stood out there and got the report, and that's just always stuck in my head, and ever since then, he's always treated all the policemen with the respect that I feel they deserve, and I want to say thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Council, may I have a motion on Bill Number 58-25?
Second.
I've moved to pass by Councilwoman Hess, seconded by Councilman Tanner. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabazz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutten?
Yes.
President Chetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you, let the record show that Bill Number 58-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next, our salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 54-25?
An ordinance amending Ordinance 76-24, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2025, petitioner Infrastructure Planning and Growth.
Can we report, please, Councilman Tanner?
Mr. President, this, or, sorry, this bill comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
And petitioner?
Good evening, Bill Schallio, Economic Development Director, part of the Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth with offices on the seventh and eleventh floor. Before you today is this bill, which will do a number of different salary changes within the IP&amp;G department. First, I would note that there are currently three planner positions in the IP&amp;G budget. What we'd like to do is reduce that by one position as we move into budget season, and then upgrade the salary of one of the other planner positions to match the lead salary for the planners. Presently, there's one planner position that's at $72,060, and then two that are listed at $69,415. What we'd suggest, what we'd like to do is move that second position up to $72,060, so we have two planner positions that have the same salary value. Next, what we'd like to do is at the Economic Development Specialist Position, that's one of the three ED positions within the team, that position is presently listed at $68,093, we would like to move that position up to $72,060 so that it pays at the same level as the planner positions. So we'd have two planner positions at that amount, and then one Economic Development Specialist at that amount. Also, within this budget request, we'd like to upgrade the salaries for the two code enforcement positions from $56,500 to $62,000. Those salary changes, as well as the other ones noted, are from existing salary lines that haven't paid out because we've been short-staffed, we were four members short for a number of months, we're down now to one position that has not been filled, that's a GIS tech position, which we hope will fill before the end of this week. So we've talked about the planner positions, the Economic Development Specialist positions, the code enforcement positions, the last two positions we'd like to adjust salary for are the GIS manager and the GIS technician position. Recently, we lost John Carlson from our project team, John had been with the county since the start of GIS, but actually had worked for the county for years before. Replacing him has been very difficult, but we have a great person in Bev Kingston, who we moved to the GIS manager. at $69,415. What we'd suggest, what we'd like to do is move that second position up to $72,060. So, we have two planner positions that have the same salary value. Next, what we'd like to do is at the economic development specialist position, that's one of the three ED positions within the team, that position is presently listed at $68,093. We would like to move that position up to $72,060 so that it pays at the same level as the planner positions. So, we'd have two planner positions at that amount and then one economic development specialist at that amount. Also, within this budget request, we'd like to upgrade the salaries for the two code enforcement positions from $56,500 to $62,000. Those salary changes, as well as the other ones noted, are from existing salary lines that haven't paid out because we've been short-staffed. We were four members short for a number of months. We're down now to one position that has not been filled. That's a GIS tech position, which we hope will fill before the end of this week. So, we've talked about the planner positions, the economic development specialist positions, the code enforcement positions. The last two positions we'd like to adjust salary for are the GIS manager and the GIS technician position. Recently, we lost John Carlson from our project team. John had been with the county since the start of GIS, but actually had worked for the county for years before. Replacing him has been very difficult, but we have a great person in Bev Kingston, who we moved to the GIS manager position. As we looked at that salary position, it pays well below the state average. So, that position paid $66,941. What we'd like to do is upgrade that position by an amount of $17,059 to a total salary of $84,000. That puts that position in a similar line with other manager-level positions within the IP&amp;G department. And then we'd like to make an adjustment on the tech position. Currently, it pays $63,130. We'd like to upgrade that by an amount of $3,869 to $67,000. Again, we believe that'll be competitive. We've done, we've gone through a whole series of interviews with candidates. We've looked at salary ranges for those GIS technician positions. The $67,000 is going to be a good help to get us a good candidate for this position. So, these are the changes proposed within Bill 54-25. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from counsel or the petitioner? Mr. Rutten, do you have a question?
I didn't.
You do or you don't?
No.
You don't?
Okay.
Hearing none. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
We'll open the public hearing on Bill number 54-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? All right. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Bill number 54-25. Any further comments by any council members? All right. Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to pass.
Motion to pass by Councilman Tanner, seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutten?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
President Chetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 54-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read Bill number 55-25?
An ordinance amending ordinance 76-24, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2025. Petitioner, prosecutor.
Committee report, please. Councilwoman Hess.
Mr. President, Bill number 55-25 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Bob Raisenhoover, prosecutor's office, offices on the 10th floor of this building. We're here this evening to ask for an appropriation and salary amendment for the staff of the Adult Protective Services Department that was recently moved out under the prosecutor's jurisdiction to an outside company. I am glad to report tonight that all of those investigators, except one, are now working for the new company. Several of them are supervisors. It was a good group of people. Been a lot of years, and they all did a good job. But hate to see them go. I've worked with them for 16 years. But anyway, we're here to ask for, like I said, salary ordinance and appropriation from the prosecutor's pre-trial division, or diversion, Fund 7398. As a side note, that fund, the pre-trial fund, is all appropriated, both appropriations and salary amendments, with the approval of the council. All of these expenses go before the council and approve. That's why we're here tonight, is to get the salary amendments. What Mr. Cotter, the prosecutor, wants to do is to, from that fund, he wants to pay these people for their PTO for the remainder of this year. These people are all severed as of July 1st. So, this takes their PTO and the payroll fringes that's due to those payments, and it's for the $25,126.
Okay. Any questions from counsel for the petitioner?
I'd like to ask a question.
Mr. Rutten.
So, I just wanted to clarify that these are all involuntary separations?
Yes. These, the whole department was moved out from the prosecutor and the county into an outside company.
Okay. And this is all driven by changes to state law?
No, by the state. I don't know if there was a law to it or not, but this company, they do other states, they do other counties too. In fact, they're taking over the state of Indiana. But I don't know about other states, but it's an outside company. I think they're in Philadelphia.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Hess.
Mr. Raisenhoover, so I just want to confirm.
I can't hear.
My notes say there are $200,000 in that pre-trial diversion fund.
Yes, as of the end of June, there's $242,240. It's grown a little bit since your note there.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, we will, thank you, sir. We will open the public hearing on Bill number 55-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online? Oh, I'm sorry, we have one. Please make sure you sign in, sir. Thank you.
Tom Rowe, 26160 Lake Lane, in regard to the APC, okay? I asked at the last council meeting for clarification, seeing that this is a mega-company out of state. Is there any protection that we have that the citizens will be treated correctly, the senior citizens? I received a response from several council members that through the prosecutor's office, they would have a check and balance, and there would be an investigator who'd check to see if there's any malfeasance. Hopefully, that's still a correct statement, okay? Because I wanted to assure the public that that's, even though it's some outside company, that at least we still have checks and balances through the prosecutor's office.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on Bill number 55-25. Any further comments from council members?
I'd just like to make one.
Councilwoman Hess?
In response to Mr. Rowe, I just want to say that to hear Mr. Raisenhoover tell me, tell us that all but one of their investigators have been hired by this firm, I find that very encouraging. These are people that have worked with that community for, like you said, 16 years. And I know Prosecutor Cotter was quite concerned that they'd be hired, and so that's good news for us. So, I think that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, may I have a motion on Bill number 55-25?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve from Councilman Fig, seconded by Councilman Tanner. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutten?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Chetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 55-25 passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read Bill number 56-25?
An ordinance amending ordinance 76-24, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees for St. Joseph County for the year 2025. Petitioner, Health Department.
Hi, yes. This is Amy Rupe, Director of Finance for the Department of Health with offices on the eighth and ninth floor. And we are requesting an appropriation from the opioid restricted fund to cover salary and programming from July 26, 2025, to December 31, 2025. The amount listed would cover one health promotion specialist whose focus is on opioid use and mental health, as well as funds for mileage and programming.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Committee report, please. Councilwoman Hess.
Mr. President, Bill number 5625 comes to the full council with favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the petitioner from council members? All right. Seeing none, I would like, Ms. Rupe, could you explain quickly, because we have a large audience here, and this is outside of our budget, this appropriation? Could you explain why we're having to do this, so people understand why we're making this effort?
Yeah, absolutely. The Department of Health has unfortunately had two grants clawed back in March of this year, as well as reduced funding that will be coming through for HFI, which is Health First Indiana, for 2026. That reduction is 73.3% of what we are currently funded at. And in order to continue this program, we are requesting the use of the opioid restricted fund.
Okay. Thank you. And the opioid restricted funds, those are monies we receive from lawsuits against corporations that manufactured opioids. Is that correct? Do I understand that correctly?
That I'm unsure of. That might be a question for Mr. Murphy.
Mr. Murphy?
That's correct. It's like, it's not into our lawsuit. It's like a class action.
Class action. Okay. And each county gets a certain amount of money?
Correct, right? There's a schedule of what everybody gets. It's a nationwide kind of thing.
Okay. So, using this money in the way described by the Health Department seems very appropriate to you.
It does, yes.
Thank you. All right. Any other council comments? All right. Hearing none, we will open the public hearing on Bill number 56-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Bill number 56-25. Any further council comments? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Tanner, seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutten?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
President Chetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Let the record show that Bill number 56-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next is public hearing, public comments on fiscal matters. Clerk, will you please read Bill number 53-25?
An ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purpose herein specified for the several departments here enlisted of St. Joseph County Government.
Because all fiscal matters were heard and discussed by the council, at its June 2025 committee meeting, we will move directly to public comment on Bill number 53-25, Parts A through H. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Bill number 53-25. Any further comments from counsel? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Second.
Move for approval by Councilwoman Hess, seconded by Councilman Thomas. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutten?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Chetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 53-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next is land use planning. Clerk, will you please read Bill number 49-25?
An ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 land usage, Chapter 154, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at 56120 and 56150 Larison Boulevard and 30350 and 30400 Fillmore Road and 56011 Snowberry Road from A Agricultural District to I Industrial District. Petitioners, St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners, St. Joseph County Redevelopment Commission, William Gallion, Scott Van Lu, Scott and Gabriel Van Lu, Eugene and Joyce Van Lu.
Thank you. Mr. Catanzerite, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill 4925 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Catanzerite. Area plan, Mr. Klein.
Yes, this is Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission Director with offices on the 11th floor of this building. So, this is a petition to rezone the area outlined in red on the screen from A Agricultural District to I Industrial District. It's approximately 70 acres, currently five parcels. It's a mix of farmed, previously farmed land, as well as three single-family homes. As you can see, it is within the IEC overlay district, which is designated by that light blue line. Therefore, if the rezoning to I Industrial is successful, it will automatically become subject to the development standards and use restrictions of the IEC overlay. And there's the property once again. It's on the south side of Fillmore between Larison and Snowberry Road, just east of the EGM site. There's looking into the site from the corner of Larison and Fillmore, looking south to the concrete batch plant, and then looking across Larison to the EGM site. As you go down Fillmore to the east, this is one of the existing single-family homes. And then this is the corner of Snowberry, and then this is the view of the site from Snowberry. And then this just shows the parcels and the addresses involved within this rezoning petition. Per the site plan provided, it does show the immediate intent of this rezoning is to establish a NIFSCO facility on that smaller parcel at the southwest corner. This is currently part of a two-lot subdivision, which will create this as an individual lot and also dedicate a street going off of Larison to the east, known as Supplier Village Drive. The remaining property to the east is being rezoned to I Industrial with the anticipation of future industrial users, and it's anticipated at that time that that will go through a further subdivision and the new road will continue to be dedicated eastward. The site plan does show the NIFSCO facility will have access on to Larison, but it's anticipated that future uses will have access onto this new road. And that's just a closer view of the NIFSCO facility and associated fencing in that southwest corner and the current pending subdivision. As I mentioned, if the rezoning is successful, it will become subject to the IEC overlay district prohibited uses. This includes a number of specified heavy industrial uses, also slaughterhouses, confined animal feeding operations, sewage treatment plants, coal and nuclear power plants, mining, junk salvage yards, metal shredders, and landfills will all be prohibited. Looking at the future land use map, this is in an area that has been, that plans for future industrial use. Specifically, it's overlaid with a category of use for business technology and research. This comes to you from the Area Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation, 721. They did find that it was consistent with the future land use map and the current comprehensive plan, also finding that industrial is the most desirable use, given the utilities that are in place and the fact that this is within the IEC overlay district and the IEC are in place, and the fact that this is within the IEC overlay district and the IEC core development area. There were four members of the public, which spoke in remonstrance at the public hearing, mainly citing concerns over continued conversion of agricultural land. Beyond that, again, favorable recommendation, seven to one, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, any questions for Mr. Klein? All right, seeing none, petitioner? Would you like to speak?
Good evening. Terry O'Brien, Economic Development Planner. My office is on the eleventh floor of this property, of this building. Sean did a very good job telling you about what was happening. I'd like to share why it's happening. All these parcels have been in the core development area since two thousand and twenty, and staff has gone out of its way to contact the landowners within the core development area to keep them updated on what was going on. During those conversations, we acquired parcel number two, which is the small parcel NIPSCO was going to be locating. We also acquired parcel number one, which would be the proposed Supplier Village. When we were going, when we knew we were going to be asking to rezone these two parcels, we got together with the Van Lou's, we got together with Mr. Gallion, shared with them what we were doing, what road improvements we're going to put in, and they asked us if they could be included into the rezoning. They have not entered into any type of agreement with any type of developer, but because they have been contacted by multiple developers over the last few years, they felt that it would be appropriate to take the steps to get their land rezoned for potential future development. If there's you have any other questions, be happy to answer them.
Any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Thomas?
Terry, any timeline on this, on the property at all, or maybe Sean can answer that question? With NIPSCO or?
NIPSCO and the Supplier Village would happen this year. The Van Lou's and Mr. Gallion would happen when and if the right developer knocked on their door.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill number forty nine dash twenty five. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing none, is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Please be sure you've written your name on the pad. Please make sure when you write your name, everyone, that you write it so that Ms. Preaw can read it, because our system here does not, is not the easiest to understand when you're trying to record what's happened in the meeting, and so her being able to read your name is very helpful when she's trying to take the minutes. Mr. Caruso?
Thank you. Dan Caruso, three zero five Compton Street, New Carlisle. Good evening, council, thank you for your work. I rise in opposition to this bill, realizing it's probably already a done deal. I don't, I don't look, I don't like what's likely going to follow this with the economic development and IPG going to the old property owners on Larison Road that had homes there, and telling them, boy, do you know what's coming in across the street? You don't want to live here and look at that the rest of your lives, do you? Why don't you sell us this house? They're pretty much forced into selling their property. So now we're going to have the people on the east side of Snowberry Road, all the way up to Edison, going to be knocks on their doors, you know what's coming in across the street here? Do you want to look at that the rest of your lives? And we are slowly, like urban sprawl, this is industrial sprawl. We're slowly spreading this industrial growth, because then Sean Klein will get up here and say, well, the character of the neighborhood is there's industrial across the street, and there's industrial to the south, and so industrial is what it should be. It's time to stop. New Carlisle has contributed greatly to the New, to Saint Joseph County economic growth. It is time for someone else to pick up the slack. No more rezoning of agricultural ground in New Carlisle to industrial. Stop the sprawl. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caruso. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to remind you that we frowned on those types of outbursts simply because we will be here until two o'clock in the morning if we take time to clap for everybody we agree with. And I understand you're wanting to express yourselves, but let's try to get through the meeting without doing that type of thing, please.
Steve Francis, two-day Lake Drive, Clay Township. Yeah, I'd like to make a point here that seventy acres, I don't know if we can get the map back up, Jennifer, on the green, the area, the green. It is within the core development area from two thousand and twenty. I was remiss at the APC in saying it wasn't, but I think that it was clear that there, you know, the Amazon site that's south of two, the massive Amazon site that was in the New York Times the other day, in which it was discussed, all the congestion, all the problems that that's caused out there, that was not in the core development area. That was added later, and you agreed to it. Another seven hundred acres. So this core development area being a justification for industrial growth, I'm saying is really just an excuse, and that what we're going to see is a period of time where, like dominoes, one after another, these landowners are going to come in and say, well, we're giving up, man, I mean, we're next to an industrial zone. Let me remind you, the setback on an industrial zone is fifty feet, five zero, fifty feet from agricultural. That's inadequate. Last year, you extended the setback on the solar field to five hundred feet. Why did you do that? And not do it in relation to industrial zones? Much more serious problems with industrial properties next to industrial zones. Property values, they're going to go down if you live next to the Amazon site. Why is there not a property value guarantee three miles away from the Amazon site? From the IEC, from the gray area there? We all know why, because that would scare business away. Business would not put up with that kind of property value guarantee. So you're going to go ahead and do this. I note that the comprehensive plan calls for business and research, business tech and research. That's not what's going to go in here. It's not business tech and research, this is assembly and manufacturing. Might be appropriate. I think the NIPSCO facility right across from the GM site is appropriate, they need to get gas in there, natural gas, so they need to have some kind of activity there. But now you see other property owners being approached, one after the other, by developers. Land speculation causes the increase in value next to, if you change it to industrial, to increase by four to fivefold. But if you tried to keep it agricultural, if you tried to keep it residential, you're going to see property values go down. So if you consider a property value guarantee in the future for anything in this county, let's consider it out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
John Hamilton, nine thirteen West Colfax in South Bend. I'm really not, I'm neutral on this issue, at least as far as taking a position, but I couldn't help noticing that there's some sort of Freudian slip. The bill is identified as fifty two twenty five on every one of your, you know, pieces of paper. I think you want to get that fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Is that a Scribner error? You got forty nine dash twenty five on the agenda? And it says fifty two twenty five on the slide there?
Just speculating, but that could have been the Area Plan Commission's bill number?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so it is Bill forty nine dash twenty five. All right. Anyone else in the room wish to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Mary?
Mary Countryman, five two nine five nine Timothy Road, New Carlisle. I too am a bit mixed on this bill as it is in the IEC area, but I am also concerned about the sprawl. Like I said, I wasn't planning on speaking today, but this isn't near me, and I want to back up what Mr. Francis said about the property values. I was at the La Porte County Fair today, and I ran into somebody I hadn't seen in years, and they said they haven't been back to this area for years, and they said, you're still living in New Carlisle, right? And I said, yeah. And they said, what a, I won't say the words they used, but a poopy hole? That whole area has become and it's being destroyed. They said they cannot believe how awful it is, and what a mess it is out there. And I kind of got a little teary-eyed, and I said, yeah, and they said, why are they doing that? And I said, that's a good question. I said, it's about the money, and I said, we've had enough, and like Mr. Caruso said, there is enough. There is enough industrial, we've got our share. Put that crap somewhere else, we don't need it in our area, we don't need anymore, because it is just spreading and spreading and spreading. So please stop, stop the sprawl. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Countryman. Ms. Wolf? Charlotte?
Hi, Charlotte Wolf, two one four three nine Osborne Road, Lakeville. Sorry. I just want to speak out in opposition to any more expansion of the data centers, you know, that I've been trying to talk to council for quite a number of months, years, about the bottom line of the data centers not really working out, and in other areas of the country. I've done quite a bit of research, and these are, long-term, a losing proposition for our community. And, okay, yeah, we got them, let's just stop with what we've got, and cut our losses, and just not convert any more of our agricultural land over, because it's just, we've had enough. So that's basically all I wanted to say. The other speakers have kind of elucidated it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak against? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill number forty nine dash twenty five. Any further comments from council members or questions for the petitioner? Oh, I'm sorry. Did, Mr. Klein or Mr. O'Brien, did you want to rebut anything? I always forget that.
Yeah, I'm not really sure if I want to or not, but since two thousand and, since this has become the core development area, when individuals, developers have contacted our office about development, we've steered them in that direction. All of our conversations that we've had with the landowners within that area was for informational purposes. We're not twisting anyone's arm and telling them, look, what's coming, you need to sell. That's all I wanted to add.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Thomas, you were the first to raise your hand.
I want to just, the answer, Mr. Caruso, Mr. Francis, Ms. Countryman, you know, it's in the IEC, and I'm with you, I don't want industrial sprawl outside the IEC, and that's within it. And that's why I'm for this, because it's inside it. And I know what you're saying, I get it. But it's within the IEC, and so industrial sprawl, to me, is just what you said, it's everywhere. And we're trying to keep this condensed, and that's why, being my district, that's why I'm for this. But I just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Katanzerite, you raise your hand, do you have a question?
I have a question for Mr. O'Brien. Mr. O'Brien, during the opposition tonight, it was alluded to that the fifty-foot separation difference, distance between agriculture and industry exists. And can you speak to that? And would you agree that many agricultural practices nowadays, based on the size of farms, to make them profitable? Or essentially industrial farms?
I think Sean would be more qualified to answer that question than myself.
How about on the question of property values? Because everybody I've heard from that has sold land out in the New Carlisle area seems to be happy that they're getting the price they're getting for their land, because it's not decreasing their property value. Can you speak to that? A suggestion was made that property values are going to decline.
It's an individual decision. A family would decide whether or not the offer was appropriate for them to relocate their family. The Van Lou's have not come to that conclusion at this time, based upon conversations they've had with individuals. They may or may not come to that decision in the future.
All right, thank you. And would you also address, before you step down, there was an, it was alluded to that this is going to become an industrial manufacturing area, and you guys are calling this a Supplier Village. Can you delineate what that means?
The one company that staff has talked to is going to produce a product that will be taken across the street to the GM plant. Will they use the entire ten acres? They have not provided us with the site plan. We don't know if it's just that entity, or if they have other entities that will be supplying raw materials to the GM plant.
They obviously would be falling within the limitations of what we allow in the IEC in terms of industrial development. They couldn't manufacture something that would...
Correct. If they didn't, they'd have to come back and ask for a special use.
Thank you. Mr. Klein, my question to Mr. O'Brien, who pointed it to you, was about the fifty-foot separation distance, and...
Yeah, I think fifty-foot setback between industrial and agricultural is appropriate. It's hard for me to believe that industrial use is within fifty feet of an agricultural property would somehow adversely impact the ongoing use and value of that agricultural property.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katanzerite. Mr. Tanner, you had your hand up next.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make a clarifying point. Mr. Francis, I believe you identified the area in our comprehensive plan that this is taking place in as being business and technology and research, but just for everybody's benefit in the room, the comprehensive plan that was a multi-year process with a lot of community input identifies this area for that use, but also light industrial. It's a both and or, an either or, it's not one or the other in this case, it's a unique overlap of both potential uses in the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Mr. Tanner, thank you. Mr. Rutten, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question for you, Sean. I know this might not be, you know, your subject matter expertise, but, you know, the industrial zoning is going to be your heavier uses, and you're going to have the larger buildings, you're going to have the larger amount of pavement. So should a, should a property owner develop, you know, be, you know, near that fifty-foot setback, right? Can they, I mean, if there's heavy rain that we see in the news periodically, can they just allow that stormwater to just run off the property into the nearby farm fields, and then flood a low-lying area that's already got crop growing in there?
They cannot. All potential runoff has to be accounted for per county engineering standards, and that's reviewed during, at the commercial plan review permitting stage. So again, I mean, even accounting for the minimum setbacks, the necessity to contain stormwater on site is also going to limit how much of the site you can actually develop with hard surface.
Okay. And then, when this IEC area was set aside, was there public hearings that solicited community input on that, gave a community opportunity to weigh in on setting aside this area for the IEC?
In terms of what I looked at for my recommendation, so you did have all the public input going into the comprehensive plan that recognizes this for future industrial uses, as well... as well as the confines of the IEC overlay district that went through the full rezoning process with two public hearings as well, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Any other council questions? Hearing none. May I have a motion on Bill Number 49-25?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Councilman Tanner, seconded by Councilman Katanzerite. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutton?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
And President Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 49-25 passed by a vote of 9 to 0. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 50-25?
Ordinance to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of St. Joseph County public way or public place. Petitioner Joanna Quinn.
Mr. Katanzerite, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill 5025 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area plan.
Sorry, just quickly before we go to that, I will say it should have been 4925. I accidentally wrote 5225. I think it was a Monday when I made that PowerPoint. I apologize. Good evening, Farrel Sharif, Area Plan Commission Staff, offices on the 11th floor. This is an alley vacation in Penn Township. The request is to vacate the half of the alley running east-west along this block up to where the previous right-of-way for Woodlawn Avenue was. Staff has reviewed this vacation per state law and has consulted with the county engineer and county surveyor. We have not found any issues with the request.
Okay. Any questions for area plan?
Yeah, I'll have one question for you. Do you know by chance how long this public way has been in place in this neighborhood?
That's a good question. It would have been, the alleys would have been laid out at the time that the subdivision was laid out and I didn't have a copy of the subdivision. I think it was prior to 1965, so it would have been pretty old.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rutton. Any other questions? Seeing none. Petitioner?
Good evening. My name is Johanna Quinn. I am the petitioner, wanting to have the alley vacated. I reside at 10741 Toledo Avenue in Osceola. And I can say, I've lived here since 1980 and the alleyway has never been open. We've never used that alley. Yeah, so...
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any questions from council for the petitioner?
Well, you know, I don't have a question, but I'd like to make a comment. I mean, so 1965, so that's 60 years, give or take, and it hasn't been used, so I'm thinking it's probably not going to be used. So would you like to use that space in your yard, for your yard?
Yes, yes.
And do your neighbors, do you think they feel the same way?
I do. There are a couple of them here with me tonight.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rutton. Any further comments from council? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 50-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? All right. Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Bill Number 50-25. Are there any further comments from council members? Mr. Tanner?
Just because I think we might need a little levity tonight. I'm not affected, but was anybody offended by Mrs. Sharif's comment that 1965 would have been pretty old? My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner.
Thanks for calling me old. Very old.
May I have a motion on Bill Number 50-25?
So, motion to approve 50-25, second.
All right. Motion to approve made by Councilman Rutton, seconded by Councilman Tanner. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutton?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 50-25 was passed by the council by a vote of 9 to 0. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 51-25?
An ordinance to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of St. Joseph County public way or public place. Petitioner Carol E. Robinson, Donald and Gillian Westerhausen, and Jordan New.
Mr. Kirk Katanzerite, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill 51-25 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Area plan, Mr. Klein?
Yes, Sean Klein, APC Director with offices on the 11th floor. So another vacation petition. This time it's for the right-of-way highlighted on the screen. This is where Fur Road and Adams Road previously connected. When the subdivision to the east was platted, they set aside, an outlawed essentially to allow for Fur Road to be rerouted in the future. It appears that this did happen sometime around 2013 and what was formerly Fur Road was concluded in a cul-de-sac, which you see below the vacation area. Therefore, this property, although it continues to be right-of-way, it's no longer improved and the adjacent property owners would like to have it vacated at this time. The county surveyor and county engineer have no objections to this vacation, nor does APC staff. Beyond that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Klein? All right. Hearing none. Petitioner?
My name's Terry Lang from the White Man Office. Our address is 1402 Mishawak Avenue here in South Bend. I represent the petitioners. I'll pass a few handouts that kind of give a timeline of the events that have taken place. The first one is the outline of the development from the Adams Road Development, who are the developers of the entire Knollwood subdivision, going from Knollwood, Knollwood West, Quail Ridge, Covington Shores, and on down the line. And this kind of outlines what they had committed to and what the county had committed What I'd like to highlight in the letter from Adams Road Development is on bullet point number seven, you'll see that the final plat was approved in 2003. Adams Road Development was informed by the county engineering office that they were going to be relocating Adams Road from here to the new location on this side over here. Adams Road worked with the county engineering office when they created the subdivision of lots in the private villa area of Quail Ridge right there. That private villa area then was kind of isolated between the old Fur Road and the new Fur Road. And the commitment that the county engineering office had made was, upon the completion of that new Fur Road right-of-way, the balance of that property then would be vacated. With the plat that was created for these lots, the new roadway right-of-way here was terminated with a cul-de-sac. The roadway is going around through the 15 homes around the villa area is a private, quiet neighborhood that is looking to, at this point, take this property that was committed to be given back to the property owners in the Quail Ridge South residents on this side as well as the villa people located on the opposite side right there. The new roadway that was put in was Ridgestone Court. Ridgestone Court, when that was developed for that access into the villa area, there are storm inlets here. This part of the right-of-way right here had been excavated and is being used as part of the retention area for the stormwater that comes off that portion of that county road. The residents are looking to take that area. Half goes to the property owner here. This lot was recently sold for a new home to be development, developed onto that piece. Mr. and Mrs. New, of which I have a letter from them that I'd like to pass also with regards to their comments with regards to this vacation immediately adjacent to their With this being the very last lot that's being built on right here, their parcel is the one that's most effective on the easterly portion of that Fur Road proposed vacation right there, as well as the two property owners on the opposite side. The area that we're talking about currently, if you were walking out there on the site, it is overgrown with trees, densely wooded along the westerly side of that right-of-way, from Adams Road all the way down to Durham Way. That portion of it, the trees are overhanging the county right-of-way. This portion of the retention basin area now is overgrown. It's something that, at this point, is not needed by the county whatsoever. We have retention areas platted for the villa area that's being currently used right there. The county expanded it and the vacation will allow the use of that as a retention area as well as, there is also an electric line and gas line. Upon the vacation of this roadway right-of-way, those would retain the rights of an easement to be in that vacated street area there. So we're not concerned with anything having to be additionally relocated from that perspective. The next item that I have that I'll pass... That item that you're receiving now is a petition signed by all of the residents in the Quail Ridge Villa area as well as the residents in the Quail Ridge South area immediately to the east. There are 31 signatures there of those residents that are in favor of this petition to vacate. There was only one item, if you look at the map, that one home on the opposite side of the street over here that they were unable to contact or were not able to commit one way or the other in favor of that petition. So the petition before you is kind of a unanimous support for the roadway area to be vacated in that portion of it. As we were developing this petition, it came to our light in the residents in the area that they had heard that that vacated roadway area was being eyed for part of the Granger Trails for that sidewalk along Adams Road to come down through that retention basin, through those people's backyards, back in through there. Again, the residents got together and talked about, you know, would they be in favor or against or, you know, with regards to that trail running through their backyards. Most of the people were concerned that they'd have to put that trail through a retention basin. They're dumping that traffic from that trail out onto the public right-of-way. You'll have kids on bicycles and golf carts and, you know, scooters or what have you. They're going to be dumping it right into the public roadway right there. And that's not a good safety concern with regards to that. And I have the petition signed by those residents also with regards to that. And the petition there basically, you know, people were expressing the concerns with regards to the safety of the children. I mean, the existing trails are along the roadway areas. They're not in people's backyards. Those don't dump off right into the street where the kids are going to be driving and riding and utilizing vehicles into a roadway area for traffic to be concerned with. This trail area, there is no place that Granger Trails goes through a private neighborhood whatsoever. It's always along the county right-of-ways. And in this case, the ideal setup, you have a super wide right-of-way along the new Granger area, which the residents were all saying, that's where that trail should go. That's why they are against it going through their little private neighborhood and making the kids go out into that public right-of-way. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that the council may have.
Any questions from council for the petitioner? All right. Hearing none. Thank you. We will open the public hearing on Bill Number 51-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Please be sure you sign in. Please write your name legibly.
Good evening. My name is David Smesert. I live at 511-51 Belchris Circle. I was born in 1964. I'd like to point that out before we get started. You have the information from Brian Eckers regarding the development. The two most important pieces are that the, in that history, the main objective for the path was to go on the west side of Fur Road. The subdivision was actually narrowed to make room for it there and it was prepared to go there as a part of the development. And then the other thing was that the original piece north, as Terry said, was supposed to be vacated time that it was done. We're a very small subdivision and we have major roads on the north and we have them over on the east and we have a major on the south where people are coming into the neighborhood. The Ridgestone Court is the only small road or private road that we have adjacent to the neighbors. I've been a resident since 2019. I've been on the HOA board since 2021. It's been evident since my time there that privacy has been an issue. It's been evident that traffic has been an issue. And since they put the path in, which again, on Adams Road, nobody is opposed to and is used quite a bit, it still has created some issues for us even on the outside. We have more trash to deal with. We have people actually coming through our trees, coming through our private property. They don't even realize that it's private property. And the common ground is often, or our lots are often looked at as common ground. It's almost park-like, the way the development was done, but people tend to come in and say, "Hey, this is for the public. We're going to go ahead and use it." And we deal with quite a bit of that as it stands today. You know, I was coming here to answer the questions that you guys asked in your last meeting. Why now? Why not in the past? And did the paths have anything to do with it? Being on the board, we have historically talked about gating the subdivision, which would have been pretty difficult for a 15-lot subdivision to do because we would have had to vacate all of Ridgestone Court. And with a section line going down the middle of it, half of it would have went to a subdivision that wasn't ours and the other half would have been ours. And how do you manage that as a private road? We also looked at the area north of Ridgestone Court and said, "How can we do anything to maintain that or do something different when it's not ours?" We didn't know any of the neighbors at that time. We do today on the other side in Quail Ridge Village South. In Quail Ridge Village, the owner at that time was a builder who was not excited about paying his dues, let alone participating in a petition to vacate. So what changed it? The paths definitely... The paths definitely did. There were three things. The neighbors that are on there and are neighbors, the area that we're petitioning in Quail Ridge South and the villas now do know each other, and they do have opposition. They would work together to get the petition approved. The builder sold his lot to the news, as Terry said, who are gonna be building a home there. One week after they closed on their lot, I was contacted by Friends of Granger Path about what they had intended to do. So, at that point in time, we were able to go for the petition. My time is up? Is that right?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Hello, my name is Bruce Harley. I live in that neighborhood. When you look at that map, Quail Ridge Villas is supposed to be a private community with a single entrance and exit. So, on that map, you enter on the south side, and that cul-de-sac is the only publicly paid-for road. The rest of that road is paid for and maintained by our community. And that green area on the perimeter that does not have buildings is a common area that each one of us pays for the maintenance. Currently, public, let's say from Quail Ridge South, will often come in, and they'll have picnics, actually planned events, graduation photos, parties, play baseball. And they don't really understand that it's basically a retirement community. So, if that land becomes part, that land north of there becomes part of the Granger Path, that would then become a throughway, and it would no longer be a secluded neighborhood. And again, the Granger Path is entirely supposed to be a perimeter. It goes up along Main Street, it comes along Adams, and it's supposed to go down Fur Road. At no point in Quail Ridge or Quail Ridge South, Quail Ridge North, does it ever penetrate or enter a subdivision. It's purely designed to be a perimeter pathway. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is Diane Musgrave, and I live at five-one-one Bellecrest Circle in Granger, in Quail Ridge Villas. I have lived there nearly fifteen years, so I was there before the old Fur Road was moved to the new Fur Road. And the developers, nearly twenty-five years ago now, were trying to use that area between the old Fur Road and the new Fur Road and Adams Road to put fifteen villas surrounded that surround a small lake. And we own the homeowners association, then received it from Adams Road Development in the end of two thousand thirteen. At that time, of course, the Indiana statute had gone through, so we have no ownership of property there. All of the property by statute has to be privately owned. So, all of the area that people assume, the green area across Bellecrest Circle, are, is the area where we have our septic fields and that looks like a beautiful green park surrounded by trees, which also was part of the original development in order to add some privacy, since we were bounded by moderately busy roads. And at the time it was developed, I believe it was referred to that the right-of-way along our side of the new Fur Road was widened by Adams Road Development in order to make room for what was to be the Granger Path. And I don't know whether anybody can speak to that in the current Granger Path group, but that was twenty, nearly twenty-five years ago. And we believe that in order to keep the integrity of our neighborhood and not to change what has been the proposition that the Granger Path goes along traveled highways, it's not dumping off inside of neighborhoods. And that provides safety not only for the people on the path, but it provides privacy for all of the subdivisions. And I think the number of people who are against this in Quail Ridge South and Quail Ridge Villas would be very similar if Granger Paths tried to empty a path inside of any other subdivision. This is not an appropriate use of it. And so, I would personally like for them to reconsider what was decided, or at least proposed, nearly twenty-five years ago, and go down our side of Fur Road, where that right-of-way was widened in order to accommodate the path. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Musgrave.
Good evening. My name is Roy Carter. I live at five-one-zero-nine-one Bellecrest Circle in Quail Ridge Villas. I'm here to speak in favor of the vacation of the right-of-way and after the construction of the Quail Ridge subdivision and the rewrite of Fur Road, and in opposition to a proposed path extension by Friends of Granger Paths from Adams Road into Ridgestone Court and changing our peaceful neighborhood. Since David and a number of others have mentioned nineteen sixty-five, I can just tell you, as an elementary school child in nineteen sixty-five, I walked to school. I didn't have a Granger Path supporting me in doing that, but I can tell you that when you do walk to school as a child at elementary school, you walk very slowly. When you come back from school, you're running as fast as your feet will take you. Now, when I looked at the closest elementary schools in location to this proposed route, none of them are within one mile of this change to the use of path. And when I look at the Safe Routes to School program, their advice is that it should be half a mile to one mile maximum. So, neither Mary Frank nor North Point nor Prairie Vista School is within a mile radius, as the crow flies, of this change. That seems like a crazy use of funds from any charity to support a 501(c) that wants to have a change of use. So, no child is gonna walk the actual forty-five minutes that it takes to go to Prairie Vista, the nearest school. I can certainly tell you from my experience, even running it, no one does that. I lived within a mile of my elementary school, and that's why I was able to do that. So, the Friends of Granger Paths, I feel, have been a little pushing the boundaries of why this would be used. So, why do they want to have a change of use? Well, I can tell you that I was out at the proposed path or the right-of-way this morning, and there were golf carts already going through there. So, there is some ulterior motive to the want to change the right-of-way, and it's not for children to walk to school. Indeed, anybody that lives in the neighborhood, the school buses come and pick up their kids, and also the adults drive them to school. So, it's not something that we feel FGP, Friends of Granger Paths, have been rather straightforward with us. You heard David Smesert talk about the fact that we were contacted at last minute by Granger Paths, and anytime we've tried to communicate with them since, we have not been successful. And they haven't come to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Paul Goldwin. I live at five-one-zero-five-one Bellecrest Circle. Just one little thing, Board. I only, you mentioned nineteen sixty-five. I only wish I had been born in sixty-five. It was a few years before. I think I'm not even, I'm not even a baby boomer. I even preceded that. But, okay. I'm here basically also to try and talk about vacating that land north of Ridgestone Court and also preventing them from building a multi-use pathway through that area. In my mind, there have been many inconsistencies and misstatements to the public regarding the need, the support, and location of this multi-use path. Let us start with the location. This has already been mentioned by several of my neighbors. We went to a board meeting that they asked us to come to, the Friends of Granger Path. And so, the board from Quail Ridge Villas went there. And they explained, and they actually explained that they knew about the existence of the moving the path to the west side of the new Fur Road. They also, which said they were talking about their path through our development, which they called SPUR. The next, the next day or the day after that, one of their board members actually spoke to one of our board members and said that they always, I repeat, always, had planned on using the SPUR as their main route, through the area that we're gonna vacate, and to dump children onto our court, onto a street that has no sidewalks. And then the children, they would have to walk through two developments, curvy roads, to get to Prairie Vista. And as stated before, this would be a long walk. Now, when it came to the other problem that we had was the financing of this thing. When the Friends of Granger Paths said that this was gonna cost them thirty thousand dollars, and they had fifteen thousand dollars already from one organization, and that they were gonna be splitting the other fifteen with Quail Ridge South. When we went to, when Quail Ridge South invited us to their board, our board to their board, I'm on the board also, but we had other people there too, they, when we mentioned this to them, they said, no, they hadn't. They had not said they were gonna be paying anything. So, why, what are they hiding? I mean, why are they saying one thing when it wasn't even true? When this got out, people started writing to their site on Facebook and door next, or next door, whatever it is called there.
I'm sorry, Mr. Goldwin. Your time is up.
Thank you. Thank you anyway.
Hi, I'm Jim Haney, Elementary School in sixty-five. I live at five-one-one-three-one Bellecrest Circle. Moved in there about twelve years ago, built on one of the lots.
I'm sorry, sir. I didn't hear your name.
Jim Haney.
Thank you.
Okay. I had the opportunity, because it was discussed, or proclaimed, if you will, that we had residents of the area full support of putting in this SPUR from Adams Road into the cul-de-sac in Quail Ridge, in the Quail Villas. So, nobody in Quail Ridge Villas was informed of this or was solicited for their feedback or input, because it does affect our neighborhood directly, because it dumps right into our very closed, private area. I know a few people on Placid Point Court, which is where the SPUR would go along backyards, one of them being my daughter and grandsons and son-in-law. And they did not know about it. So, what I did is, is I wanted to inform and then ask a couple of questions of every resident of Quail Ridge South on Placid Point Court and Quail Ridge Villas. You know, just so we could have the affected residents' input and where they solicited. Hundred percent did not know about it. Hundred percent, both across Placid Point Court and in Quail Villas. So, I asked two questions after informing them and showing pictures of what was being proposed. Are you in favor of a path? And if you're not, would you be in favor of vacating it to the property owners? We wouldn't have to deal with this issue again. Numbers mean everything. So, if I break it up, the folks against putting in a SPUR from Adams Road to the cul-de-sac in Quail Ridge Villas, fifteen residents said, "No, they're not in favor of that." Hundred percent. In Quail Ridge South, across Placid Point Court, both sides of the road, again, that's seventeen houses, sixteen said they were not in favor of a path. They were in favor of vacating. One said they just believe in public access anywhere. So, if you look at the numbers, people really want this to stay the way it is today, private, quiet. And it's why most of us bought our houses the way we did with the backyards where they are and in the villas. Four themes came out in those discussions, and they've been mentioned. Privacy, security, property values, and quality of life because of the noise. And I think privacy is a big one, because it opens up the backyards of three houses to a full view of people walking back and forth, one being my granddaughter's grandson. And for the rest of us, you know, from a privacy perspective, it opens up public access into a very quiet neighborhood, why we bought into the village in the first place. So, that's why we're in favor of keeping it the way it is and approving the vacation. And hopefully, you approve the vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Haney.
I'm Carol Lee Robertson, one of petitioners, and I live at five-one-zero-three-six Placid Point Court. I, since we're all admitting it, I will say I was definitely born before nineteen sixty-five. I won't tell you when. So, I am the unlucky owner of the property that forms a triangle. So, I have, my backyard is on Fur and also on this right-of-way. So, I have this big corner backyard, and so I have both of those pieces. Now, that gives me some knowledge about what happens. The electric company came, and I guess one of the companies, utilities, came and chopped off all the vegetation that separated my property from Adams Road. And the sidewalk is there. So, now I get to see all the teenagers. Anytime I go out in my backyard, I don't mind the walkers, you know, and the young kids and dog walkers, but the teenagers on their golf carts fly down that pathway on Adams with a cart full of very young kids that shouldn't be driving. So, it's noisy. I mean, they are very noisy. And now, if we have this going on the other side, it will take the other side of my yard and do that, which will definitely lower my property values. So, I do not want that to happen on both sides of my property. So, I am definitely here for the reason to petition against it, because I have experienced part of that, and there's just no reason. The logical way for them to get around is to go further down to the corner of Adams and Fur and then to build a pathway along Fur, because there's no sidewalk there. That would make it much safer. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson.
Hi, good evening. I'm Donnie Westerhausen. I live at five-one-zero-five-four Placid Point Court. I would like to say, number one is I'm in favor of Granger Paths in general. I grew up in the area. A path that would connect subdivisions would be, would have been ideal, growing up, just with friends in different locations. The thing I'm not for is if this path goes right past private property. So, my house is right next to Mrs. Robertson, so my backyard would be directly next to the path. I have three kids, ten years old, seven years old, and three years old. So, my primary concern would be with privacy, safety, which has been mentioned. One thing that hasn't been mentioned is back there, there's no lighting. So, when it's dusk out, when, that's usually when my kids are still wanting to go outside, there, you know, there's gonna be increased foot traffic, increased motor vehicles, golf carts, stuff like that. The last thing that I wanna do when I come home is worry about the kids in the backyard with who knows is out there. You know, am I gonna have to put up a fence? Am I gonna have to increase my security cameras, lights, stuff like that? So, it's a real concern in terms of privacy. I agree with putting a path down Fur Road. Every other path goes into an entrance to a subdivision. Putting one through private property into a busy cul-de-sac doesn't make too much sense. And especially when you add low lighting, you have pedestrians... You have pedestrians and motor vehicles without visibility or light, that's going to spell problems for accidents. You know, what about security for that area? What about liabilities if something were to happen? So asking for vacating the right-of-way there, just to help with, secure the safety and privacy for my family. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Westerhausen. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing none, is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing none, is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on bill number 51-25. Mr. Klein, was there anything you wanted to add at this moment?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments from council members?
Mr. Shetzel.
Yes, Ms. Drake.
I'd just like to say, I'm really familiar with your neighborhood. It's not too far from where I live. You're not in my district, but I know it well, and I understand all your concerns. I also believe that Granger Paths is a great project, but I can understand why you wouldn't want it going through your neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Drake. Mr. Rudden.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Shawna a question, if I can. So it sounds like 20 years ago, the road went through there, and then there was a project to reroute the road, and so you leave that space behind. So in the 20 years since, can anybody have proposed a petition to vacate or to use, to put a path, or any other use for that within the last 20 years?
Well, any of the abutting property owners certainly could have petitioned to vacate it at any point in time. In terms of putting a path there, since it is county right-of-way, that would have required approval from the county engineer's office, but...
But they could have done that any time in the last 20 years?
They could have requested that approval, I imagine, so, yes.
Okay. And then, can a path be extended along either side of Fur, south of Adams?
I mean, it's kind of outside my expertise to say if there's enough right-of-way for that to safely be done.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments? I would like to comment and share the same thoughts as Ms. Drake. This is my district. I recognize many of your faces. And I do want to also emphasize that I don't think there was any malicious intent by anyone at Granger Paths. It's a great organization that's trying to connect our community through paths. They have grand and exciting plans that they would like to fund in our community. I think they are, they did hear you, and at this point, I think they would also, most of them involved with Granger Paths would also agree that this, with your, that this be, not be a path down through this area. I am certainly in agreement with you that this should stay, should be private property. No other comments? May I have a motion on bill number 51-25?
Motion to send favorably.
Second.
Motion to send favorably by Mr. Thomas, seconded by Ms. Drake. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Rudden?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Cattan's right?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Pass is 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 51-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Before we move on to bill number 17-25, I think it behooves us to take a short break. We will recess until 8:10.
Recording stopped.